Looks like it's 5:47. Thank you, everybody, for being patient with us as we go through this. This is their first time doing this as a planning board for the town of Belgrade, doing it via Zoom. So, thank you, everybody, for doing this. Um, let's, let us get into the Shoreland Zone application. I do not have that in front of me at all.
I don't either, Peter.
Okay.
I do.
So, so was that sent? Just, just wondering if I'm looking in the right spot for it?
It was sent.
Do you know when or what date?
I don't, because I can't find it anymore.
I tell you what, I will resend it to you guys. Hold on just one sec.
Okay. Hi, Pete, we hear you. Thank you. Pete Sargent, hello.
There we go.
All right. Yes.
George, what was the Linda White application for? Was it the, wasn't the walkout basement, was it?
It was a daylight basement, and I can, you know, play Gary if you want me to, Peter.
Let us do that, so that we don't get too waylaid.
Okay, so, and I'll just read it from the application, proposed construction or change in use. Add daylight basement beneath current 24 by 24 cabin on posts and additional 10-foot onside. The, it would, the present structure is 576 square feet in size. The proposed structure would be 816 square feet in size if once constructed. The property is pretty good size. It's 100 by 400, so a little shy of an acre. The, so it's not a non-conforming lot. I don't believe.
It is, it is because of the shore.
But just barely.
Well, 200 feet, it was the 100 feet on the shore, or 100 feet wide, 100, must be 100 on the shore.
Yeah, it looks like it's 100 feet wide.
So it's 100 feet short of a conforming lot.
Yeah, okay, so I stand corrected on that. The application, in addition to the front page, consists of a site plan that's to scale, a supplemental drawing, and details about soil erosion control around the construction project, which will consist of a silt fence with hay bales and up gradient of it. It's a pretty steep site, 30% slope. And then there are photos attached as well.
Do we know, if I had time today, I was gonna go to the town office and check the map. Maybe Nick can check it. But when I see 30% slope, I'm wondering if it could be in the Resource Protection Slope District. We've make sure, make sure it isn't before we approve something, because you can't expand a structure in the Resource Protection Slope District.
That's a good, that's a good question, Rich. According to, I've now received the application. So Anthony, thank you for sending that out. Um, I can, I've opened it and I'm looking at it, and it says that it's on Wanzar Lane, if I'm not mistaken. And, so that's on Great Pond. And remember, do remember, coming from Route 8 and 11 going, it's kind of at a higher spot going down to, to the lake, but I'm not sure if it's steep enough, based on my memory, that's Resource Protection. We should find out if it is.
Yeah. Is Nick listening in? Or is Gary?
Gary's not here tonight. No, he's not. He has some appointments to attend to.
Okay.
I don't recall Resource Protection in that area, Meselansky, but it's something we should definitely find out before we approve anything.
Right. So, so Nick, have you the ability to check the map?
The, which map?
Um, it's the Towns Shorelands zoning map. And there, there are Resource Protection areas indicated, I think it's like a red.
All right, one sec.
Does, does anybody know where Wanzar Lane is? I'm not familiar with it. Is it on that one shoreline where we've, we have that extensive area of 20%? The Slope District?
Don't know.
Wanzar Lane, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember. Seems like if you're heading south towards Augusta on, on 8 and 11, after you come down from Dan Tremblay's house.
Yeah.
And the foot of the hill, round the corner a little bit, head, head towards, oh gosh, all I can think of is the old Call Your Property on the right, and.
Dave Lee's house right there?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I don't know, I can't remember what the map is for that part of the, of Great Pond. The area I was thinking of that's always been problematic is on the southwest shore, south, yeah, southwest shore.
We're talking, we, we're talking Meselansky, George.
Oh, 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 oh. My apologies, I thought we were on Great Pond, according to.
We are in Great Pond.
Oh, okay, then Peter's, oh, you're, is that, Wanzar Lane goes back toward Great Pond, okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. I have one other comment about that, other than the Resource Protection. When someone places a foundation under a structure, a non-conforming structure, we're supposed to look at whether or not it can be moved back to the greatest practical extent before approving to. And so that would be an issue that we need to consider.
Right. And I would want to, to let the applicants know where we're finding that information in the Shoreland Zone. Rich, could you, could you help guide us to that particular page?
It'd be on Non-Conforming Structures.
So, I'm with you, I'm on page nine, that's C, Non-Conforming Structures, so, so 12, Section 12, C.
Yeah, gotta get there.
To make sure the applicants know where we're coming from.
Okay, it's a, it's on page 12. 12C3, Foundations. Whenever a new or enlarged or replacement foundation is constructed under a non-conforming structure, the structure and new foundation must meet, be placed such a setback requirement is met to the greatest practical extent as determined by the Planning Board, basing its decisions on criteria in subsection five below.
Thank you for getting us there.
Okay.
So, let us get back to Mr. Poole. Nick, have you returned yet?
I have, I had the map, A map. I don't know how well it will be useful over Zoom. Let me see if I can share my screen with you guys. I don't see an option to share my screen with you guys.
Okay. Let's see. I don't know how to do that either. I have an option to share my screen, but I don't, I don't know if I could turn over control to you, then you could share yours or not. Um. Nick?
Yeah.
Do you have the ability to look at the map and determine where Wanzar Lane is?
Let me see.
We can help you get there. So, it's gonna.
You might, one sec, let me zoom in. It's Great Pond?
Be on Great Pond, it'd be on the, the eastern shore of Great Pond. And trying to think what else. Maybe half down. It's just a guess.
All right. Halfway down. I'm looking for Wanzar Lane?
Yes.
I guess it would be down near the bend coming down 8 and 11, right? Where, when you hit to the bottom of the hill, road bends to the right, and it must be right in there somewhere.
Yep. Between the bend and, like Steve Foster's Grandview Drive, that area.
I think, I think I got it right there. What, what are you looking for in particular in that area?
So, one of the things.
It's a little blurry.
One of the things that Rich brought up was whether or not it's in, this particular property is in Resource Protection District.
Let me see, I gotta rotate. So blue.
Peter, if, if, if Nick can't really determine it, I could take a drive down, take him five minutes, and you guys can continue to discuss the application.
Because on the computer, it's very, whoever scanned it in, it's very blurry, and it's hard to tell. And the colors, what they have in the bottom left corner don't really match what's up in, in that area. So it's hard to tell what color they're referencing.
Okay.
The original map is in, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Rich.
The original map is in Gary's office, and, like I said, I could take a quick rundown, and Peter lets me, if Nick lets me in, I can check the map and come back, and I'll be back in six minutes.
That's a possibility. Craig, are you at the town office?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I, I didn't know if you had by chance wandered in there, okay. Otherwise, I would say, hey, could you go into Gary's office and look at the map? All right, um, yeah, maybe that's the, the best thing is, is, Rich, if you can get, get there and take a look at it, that'd be great.
I'll take my mask and head out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you guys can continue to talk about it, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so, I would, I would say then to the other board members, we should probably proceed, thinking about this with the, with the question mark as to whether or not this is in the erosion, in the Resource Protection District. You know, that's a big question, we have to figure that out. But nonetheless, as was pointed out, if it is not, we do have to ask about, perhaps, moving this back to the greatest practical extent. So I don't know what would allow that to occur, or disallow that to occur, or resources, or things that are in, on the, on the ground there. We do have the applicant, Linda, can ask questions.
According to the site drawing, there's 28 feet or so between it and the next. And the, the only thing on the site drawing that's further behind the cabin, and it's about 28 feet away, is the gravel driveway, but, you know, with a 30% slope, you know, there's no way to know if there's boulders or.
Right.
There's no power line shown, or any, any of the usual kind of impediments to moving something back.
Yes, there is power line. There is power lines that cross the driveway that go to the neighbor's home.
Hi, Linda, thank you for helping us with this. So I see on the drawing a power line that crosses the gravel driveway. Are these squares, let's see, one is five feet, so it's gonna be five, 10, 15, 20, 25-ish feet to the, probably the closest point from, or so, from the, from the edge of the gravel driveways. Does everybody see what I'm looking at there?
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not sure, between the cabin and the dr- gravel driveway, there's a gravel path. I can see something that says cedar tree, maybe?
It looks like there would be a septic tank.
Go ahead, Linda.
There is a septic that's right behind, about six feet behind the cabin.
Ah. Okay. Um. Are, are there trees? I, I see the words wooded on the either side of the cabin. Does that mean that there are mature trees that sort of surround the cabin?
Yes, it is, and as you go back towards the driveway, it, it narrows.
Oh, so it narrows in terms of opening because trees are encroaching the area, right? Am I seeing this correctly, like this?
Yeah.
And Linda, I, this is Peter. I can see a, a line on your drawing that goes from a cabin, the cabin, back somewhere off the thing. It looks like a, does it say a well line? Is there a private well that's far and back of the property?
Yeah, well, there's a well that is on the back lot, so there is a line that goes from the cabin right up the middle of the driveway to the well across the road.
And that's your well?
Yes.
BRB.
So for the Planning Board members who are here and available, I guess I would take this opportunity to say, does this, does this warrant a site visit? Or, or maybe before, is it, do we wait until Rich gets back? What are your thoughts, everybody?
Um, my, this is George. My personal thought is to wait till Rich gets back. One, because he raised the issue, and I think the most limiting factor is gonna be the location of the septic tank, a mere six feet behind the tank, and whether, you know, what Rich's thoughts are, whether that's impractical to move it any closer. I, I don't know that there's a setback necessarily from a septic tank to a building, but there has to be at least a limited amount of space just for piping.
Right.
Think of setbacks 10 feet.
It's 10 feet.
I think so.
Thank you, Craig. On the drawing, I'm seeing some words that says slope to something stream, intermediate stream? Linda, is that what that says?
Yes, it is. Yeah, there's a little, I don't know if you call it a brook or a stream, that in the spring, you've got water, and it dries up in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Rich, this stuff by, and it is in limited residential.
Okay.
That'll be important to note for the minutes, since that's a critical question.
Okay. So it's in limited residential, not in Resource Protection, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Um. So in terms of moving back to the greatest practical extent, knowing that the septic is six feet behind the structure. We also are made aware that it's wooded area. I guess I'll just ask again, maybe when Rich comes back. Is anybody thinking that leaning towards a site visit that's needed for this?
Well, Craig had mentioned that, it's his understanding that it's a 10-foot setback from the septic tank to the building.
Right.
That's required. I don't know if Craig's talking about the plumbing, under the plumbing code, or under the Shoreland zoning ordinance, or both. I haven't found it in the Shoreland zoning ordinance, but it's probably in the plumbing code.
Plumbing code, I think I can get a variance to six feet.
That'd be great.
Looking at, looking at the site, I mean, the only place you could really move it would be back to the left, and then you'd have power lines running all over the place, or cutting down trees. Don't think it's very practical.
Yeah, based on the, on the site drawing, Craig, I would tend to agree that there's, from a practical standpoint, I don't know where, where we can move back. If you went one side and back, or the other side and back, is it doable? Yeah, but it's at the expense of a whole bunch of trees on either side, looks like. I'm not convinced that there's, just by looking at this, that there's a, an opportunity for payoff to move it back, I'm not sure. Not that there is.
Maybe we could revisit this, once Rich returns home, and, and take up a couple other questions? There he is, speak of the dog.
We're going to residential.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah.
So, discussing, since it's limited residential, and not Resource Protection, we're thinking about the, the term, moving the structure back to the greatest practical extent.
Mm-hmm.
Based on the drawing that we have for, plan, I should say. Um, to me, it seems like there are not a lot of good options in terms of moving back.
Yeah.
Craig filled us in with some information about the distance that the septic is to the current structure. Currently about six feet. And
Yeah.
About the limit.
Yeah, yeah.
Near as we can tell.
Yeah. Yeah, other than those two issues, I didn't have any issues that I saw of significance.
Okay. Um, Rich, I, I can't remember if you were present when I asked Linda, but I asked Linda about the wooded nature of the property. She said. Were, were you there?
No.
Okay, so she said there are, there are mature woods underneath the cabin, and it narrows as it gets back, sort of towards the, back towards the driveway.
So, I. The general thinking is, can't move it back?
That's the general thinking. That's, that's at least my opinion, based on what, what I'm, I'm seeing on the plan.
I guess the new foundation won't entail wiping out any more trees or whatever.
We can ask the applicant, Linda, would you happen to know the answer to that question? Would there be the removal of any trees during construction?
No. No, there, there's enough space between the, the cabin and, and the, well, where the additions going to put it in.
Who's doing the construction?
We are hoping it's every main cabin master.
Okay.
That would be a second one for us.
Yeah.
And, and the concrete would be Hawtham Concrete.
Yep.
Peter?
Yes.
Um. This is a minor issue compared to the ones we've discussed so far, but the application doesn't provide the name or the certification number for the DEP certified contractor that would be required because of the excavation work associated with the proposal.
I was just looking at that, too. We would need that information. In, and Linda, I would, I would pass this along to you, that, that it is possible to have an approval of an application with a condition that that information is supplied for the start of any, any construction that, that can take place. We would need that information.
Okay, we, we can call Larry Hawtham right now.
Um. It needs to be supplied to Nick Poole at the town office.
Okay.
It has to be a ma- I guess, in my opinion, it should be a matter of record, so added to the permit, permit application. So as long as that's supplied to Nick, that's, that's fine. I don't mind having Larry weigh in on this, and it would be minuteed, and it would be part of the, part of the discussion, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're all approaching this, you know, the same way.
Well, we, we could contact him and get that information, and get it to Nick tomorrow morning.
That's fine, you can email it to me, Linda. That's fine. You can email it to me Linda if you'd like.
Okay, can do that.
Yep. So that'd be an action item for you, Linda?
Yes.
Oh, Rich has.
Will that delay anything? You'll prove it.
We'll prove it with a condition.
Okay.
Linda, that's what I was saying that has been done in the past, that permits have been approved with a condition. So so once the conditions met, then, then things can go forward. The condition has to be met before any construction happens.
Understood.
Peter. Just another point for Linda that just so she may have already done this, but it would appear that the project would need a permit by rule from DEP for soil disturbance within 75 feet of the lake. And it's not really one of our requirements, but I don't want to get her, her to get in trouble by not getting that permit by rule from the department. It's just informational item.
Okay, thank you.
So, go ahead, George.
I have two questions for Linda, just clarifications on the site drawing, if I may. Linda, this is George Seale. I'm just wanted to make sure I understand the drawing correctly. The mulch path that goes from your camp down to the lake, that's existing, that's not new or proposed. Is that correct?
That is correct. That was put in last year by Lake Smart and the YCC.
Okay. And, and is that also true of the, what's labeled erosion gravel on the downslope and upslope sides of your, your camp?
Are you, are you talking like in front and in back of the cabin?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, that was also put in by Lake Smart last year.
Okay, thank you. Peter, the only other issue that I, I've identified is the need for stormwater control for the runoff from the new, the roof area of the addition.
Thank you, George. Do you want to address that in terms of a question to Linda or a comment? Because she may not know what that would be?
Yeah, let me just explain, Linda, the ordinance requires stormwater on any new expansions coming off the roof be addressed in accordance with Maine DEP guidelines and, or best management practices, I should say. And I don't see anything on the site drawing, but it probably would be similar to what you already have in the front and back of your camp. And we can handle that as a condition of approval as well. And typically do.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And Linda, this is Peter and we, we can, as a matter of course, provide you with at least some handouts that help guide you to that, to some of those best management practices. So it's not a mystery or anything like that. It's very accomplishable and straightforward.
It's probably the same pamphlets that we got from Lake Smart last year.
It, it could be. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Not me.
Not me.
Not me.
Also.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, are, are there any other comments or things, items to discuss before entertaining a motion on this? If, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I guess I would make a motion to approve the application with two conditions. The first, that stormwater from the roof of the addition be handled in accordance with DEP best management practices. And secondly, that prior to the start of construction, the name and number of the DEP certified contractor be provided to the code enforcement officer.
I would second that.
We have a motion and seconded. Any more discussion? Linda, do you have any questions for us about this?
No, I don't think so. I will contact Nick tomorrow and, and I assure you that we certainly will do the, the stormwater piece, the, the whole length of the, the camp. And I assume if this is your final, it's your final approval on it, that can we start prior to receiving the actual permit? Because I know you'll mail it to me.
Not that I'm aware of. You could get the permit in a couple of days. I don't know, Nick, does it, does it, I don't want to speak for you, but when it goes out from the town office, it doesn't take that long to get to Winslow, right?
No, it doesn't. I can also scan and email it to you Linda if you'd like.
Oh, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
So Linda, thank you very much for being patient with us as we go through this with you. If you have no, no more questions for us, we will take a vote on this. Are you all set?
I am all set.
Any other board members have any other questions or comments or items for discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. So I'm seeing one, one, two, three, four, five, five in favor, none opposed. The application has been approved, Linda. It will be mailed and scanned and emailed to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Linda, I would just compliment you on going through the Lake Smart program. You're the first one that I can recall we've issued a shoreline zoning permit that has.
Well, thank you.
Agreed. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. We want to keep the lake clean.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, so we've, we've handled one item for shoreline zone permits. The other applications in front of us, the applicants are not present. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so does the board want to then skip over the other two items? Because we had two more, right? And then
Can I interrupt a second?
Hi, Michael. Yes, indeed.
Your, your vote should be a roll call vote. When you're doing it remotely like this, you have to have a roll call vote. So just go one by one and ask George, how do you vote? Craig, how do you vote and so forth?
Thank you for telling us that because I, I did not do that. So should I, for the record, since it's being recorded, go back and say that each, if I person voted in favor?
I wouldn't worry about this one. It's done. But from here forward, you should do that.
Okay, will do. Thank you. So are we all in agreement to go to this, to the solar array discussion?
Yes.
I agree.
George, at this time, do you want to talk about the item we discussed at the top of the hour or it started the meeting?
Yeah, if I could just take a second so that I can explain myself. I'm not sure everybody was online at the time when it came up, but I'm, I'm going to recuse myself and, and restrain from from, refrain from the discussion and, and the votes. I don't have a legal conflict of interest or what's considered a legal bias in that I'm not, I don't have any financial stake in the project. I don't, I'm not an employee. I'm not a contractor that would work on the project and I'm not related to the applicant, but I am good friends with Steve and there certainly would be, if I were a member public, I would question whether there was a, an appearance of bias or a conflict and I, I reviewed the MMA guidebook on, on this and, and apparently there are a number of court cases where the courts have recommended people recuse themselves when they even have the appearance of a conflict of interest. So in, in the interest of, you know, not undermining any decision that's made one way or the other, I think that would be the best course of action for me.
Thank you, George. Okay. So with, with that having been said, we have four of us, so Peter Rushton, Craig Alexander, Pete Sargent and Rich Baker, who are able to participate in this. So that's more than a quorum and we can, we can proceed. I, I was reviewing the the commercial review ordinance. Quite frankly, we've, I don't recall having done many since we've amended the ordinance a couple of years ago. So I feel a little bit rusty, quite frankly. So please bear with me as we go through this. So this application, um, I was kind of hoping that Gary would be here to speak to the completeness of the application. Do we know that if this is complete?
Say it's one of the best put together applications come to the planning board.
Fantastic. And we have folks from TRC here. Would you folks mind introducing yourselves?
Not at all. My name is Mark Christopher and I coupled together the application and this is kind of the stuff that I do for a living.
Yeah, and I'm Tom Daniels. I'm the civil engineer, the engineer of record for this project.
Right, and I'm Steve Booksbaum, the owner of Solar Fields.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thanks for coming and joining us tonight. Bear, please, I, I ask for your patience as we get through this. It's an important thing and I want to do it right. So we may have some questions for you as we go through this.
Would it be a benefit to ask them to briefly describe the project and what's going on?
Yeah, I, I have prepared a few comments. First, I just want to thank the board for reviewing the project under these difficult circumstances. I wanted to just briefly lay out what a community solar project is because I'm sure your, your board hasn't reviewed anything like it and indeed most of these types of projects have just been proposed in the last few months. This new emphasis on solar energy really stems from a law that was passed by the legislature last year, an act to promote solar energy projects and distributed generation resources in Maine, in which the legislature, the law, the law directs the Public Utilities Commission to put together a solicitation for requests for proposals for solar projects around Maine. And they have gone forward with that and the solicitation has drawn a lot of interest. There are many, many projects that have been proposed. But really what I wanted to talk about was, well, what is a community solar project? And really it's a project that will be developed by the developer and the developer will try to attract subscribers to be part of the project. Consumers who are interested will sign a contract for a share of the electricity produced by the project. And I should say that businesses and residential consumers are able to join. It's a cheaper way to develop solar energy than the rooftop systems that everybody's seen examples of. And I think that's a major benefit of this type of development and the reason why the legislature signed onto the ID. I just thought that that kind of background may be missing from the application and I wanted to fill that in. Project itself is a two megawatt project that will be located on the lot that's shown in the application. I, I think you probably have looked at the layout, so I really won't go into that too much. The only other thing I'd like to say is that I feel like the buffer and the existing tree, trees on the lot will help to mitigate some of the visual impacts of the, of the project.
Thank you very much for that overall description. If you don't mind, maybe just for my benefit, I, I have, see now, so one, two, three, four, five PDFs that are part of the application, I think, that came from, from TRC and Tom, I see your name on a lot of things here. Which of these is the overall application? I'm a little confused. I'm sorry.
So the application was rather large, so we broke up some of the pieces. There should be one titled
Site grading and drainage. C2 is a good one.
Right, the application. The application itself is entitled Belgrade Development Review Application Draft 513 2020.
I think what he's looking for is one of the, one of the maps. What's the best map for them to look at for the layout? I think that's what he's asking.
Nope, I'm starting off at the beginning, you know, just the application and just starting at the beginning. Then we will get to the maps, want to get to, you know, understand the site location. I see a letter to Gary. Is that the start, Tom, of the application?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And do the board members all have these items too?
I have a hard copy of the application.
I'm looking at the Commercial Development Review Ordinance Permit application. It's all filled out. I got, I got a copy of this from Nick a couple nights ago. The, the binder, vinyl binder, bottom in stick.
Wow.
That's what I have, Peter.
All right, great. So you have all the information. You probably, you, you and Rich will probably be, be more adept at leafing through the, the items than I would be. You have the paper right there. So let's start at the beginning. Site, I know it's off Route 25, 135, but where is it?
Well, if, if you remember the old Christmas tree farm that is on the south side of, I guess it would be the, or the east side of 135. It's about half a mile from the intersection of the West Road with 135 going towards Christie's store. It's about half a mile from the intersection of the West Road with 135 going towards Christie's Store.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Is that where Skip Hammon had his Christmas trees or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And the TRC team and everybody there, just to point out the obvious, our Commercial Development Review Ordinance doesn't have anything specific to solar energy at all. It does have something for wind power, but I just want to make sure we said that upfront. So I'm looking for how, how this all fits in, that's all.
Yeah, if I could just say something real quick that might, might help us a little bit, the, the cover letter addressed to Gary addresses a few issues in detail like, like sound and safety types of issues. So it was intended to sort of pull together and augment the application form as well as introduce the materials in the application. So obviously on the, on the first page is a list of the attachments and those are all tabbed in the, in the rest of the application. So you might have to flip back and forth between some of the attachments, but you know, pretty much all of the maps that, that the commercial application requires are in there. Gary offered to get us a copy of the Shoreland Zone map, but we're not in, we're not in any of the Shoreland Zone categories. And then the actual application form is in there with all the different performance standards addressed. And again, the, the cover letter is, is intended to help address those performance standards in some additional detail.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much for guiding through that. Appreciate that. Let's see.
Peter, at some point we have to go to the checklist and make sure, check off all the portions of the application to make sure it's complete.
I know. And if I remember correctly, that was one of the things that we were hoping to expedite when we, when we revised the ordinance, I thought. But we can get into that a little bit more later. So does anybody have the checklist?
Nick sent it out.
He's standby.
Yeah, it's, it's part of our, one of our attachment, attachment one. You go to attachment one, page thirty-three or thirty-eight is right out of your application. So that, that gives you the blank checklist.
Okay, thank you. Mark, you said that's page thirty-one?
Page thirty-three or thirty-eight and it's in, it's in our attachment, what we call attachment one, which is the application form. So it's right behind the letter.
Now, if you were really on the ball, you would have checked it off for us.
I came, I started to, but I realized that I'm not supposed to. I could do it for you now.
Yeah, attachment one. Okay, standby. Got it. Okay. Is everybody, is everybody on attachment one, the application part? Either, yeah, okay. All right, so we will, the purpose is to determine if this application is complete. So looking at this, we have the applicant name, what was name of the development going through this, the owner. All that information there. Name is the property owner. Applicant representing self, no. Who is that? TRC, we've got Mark Christopher, Tom Daniels here with us tonight. Thank you, gentlemen. Am I, am I going too quickly? Let me know.
You're going at a very nice speed.
Okay, great. Item six, person to receive all communications are Steve and Mark. Number seven, what legal interest does the applicant have? They are, Steve is the owner. Contain any deed restriction or covenants? Steve has mentioned the answer to that is no. Therefore, there are no covenants or restrictions listed. Moving on to land and location information. Map seven, lots twenty-five B. Number nine, the street is Manchester Road, Route 135, ten. Item ten, total acreage is twenty-five acres. Item eleven, existing structure on parcel. Steve has said there are no field, open fields, no structures. Other existing land uses, it's mentioned it's forested. Moving on to item twelve, is any portion of the property within a shoreline zone as depicted on the town of Belgrade shoreline zoning map? The answer is no. Is any portion of the property within a special flood hazard area as on the FEMA flood insurance map? The answer is fourteen is the property part of an approved subdivision. The answer is no. Fifty is the property to be developed, located within five hundred feet of a municipal boundary. Answered no. Moving on to proposed development land use application overview. A quick, this looks like a very similar summary that, that Steve provided us. Talking about solar array, project can provide electric power to as many as six hundred average main homes. The project will connect to local electric grid via CMP distribution lines that extend along Manchester Road, which will require an upgrade to a three-phase line. Moving on to item seventeen, are any waivers of the application submission requirements or ordinance performance being requested? With a submission. There is no text, Mark, but there is text that says if yes, list each here, but there's nothing listed. So is the answer no to that one?
Your answer should be no, yes.
All right, thank you. Nick, would you, would you just make, make sure to make that adjustment on the application?
Yes, I'm following along with you guys.
Thank you very much. So that was item seventeen. Moving on to item eighteen, application fee required to be submitted amount attached. It looks like a hundred dollar fee was paid. Does, number nineteen, does this development or change of use propose a require or require extension or expansion of any of the following public infrastructure? Yes or no? They've answered no. Provide twenty, provide an estimate of cost of the proposed development. The answer is three to four million dollars. Item twenty-one, provide anticipated start and completion construction dates. The answers are start date September twenty twenty and anticipated completion date August twenty twenty-one. Item twenty-two, will any portion of land parcel or structure be dedicated to a public use? The answer is no. Item twenty-three, identify method of water supply. Water supply will not be required. Is water supplied to be used for fire suppression? The answer is yes. What other water uses will the project include? Please specify. There are no other specific requirements or indications. Moving along to item twenty-four, identify method of sewage disposal. Individual, central or other. The answer is other. Waste disposal is not required. Twenty-five, what, what federal or state government permits or approvals are required by this proposed development use? Main DOT, the answer is yes. If yes, permit type, road driveway opening permit. Then it says, did DOT, MDOT require a traffic movement permit? The answer is no. So could we pause there for a second? Just wanted to check in with the TRC team. See, if a MDOT driveway permit is, is required, have you acquired that yet?
Yes, we received the DOT highway access permit on May sixth, I believe it was.
Perfect, okay. And you're probably already ahead of me and just forgive me if I'm, I'm not caught up yet, but, but was that part of the application too?
I think we included the application, the actual MDOT application, but we hadn't received the permit when we submitted this. We have a permit.
Yeah. And we can, we apply that as a addendum to the application.
Okay, thank you so much. See, I think we are on the latter half of item twenty-five. Next was main DEP protection, DEP. Was there something required there? The answer is yes. If yes, the permit type that they're talking about is the Natural Resource Protection Act, permit by rule, chapter five hundred, stormwater management permit by rule. So, so team, TRC team, have you applied for that yet?
Yeah, we received both of those permits since submitting this application. So we apply those as well.
We actually have them.
They were in the.
Been there as, as part of attachment eight.
Okay, thank you. Great, moving on. After that, we had main DHHS drinking water program. That would be not applicable in this case because there's no drinking water. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, that answer is no. The next thing is other. That answer is no or none. Next is item twenty-six, are you applying exclusively for approval to mine an existing sand and gravel pit for the next five years? That answer is no. We then proceed to twenty-seven. This has to do yeah, general development standards. Twenty-seven, how will development or proposed use control emissions of dust, ash, smoke, particulate matter or other pollutants? The answer is dust control during construction will be sprayed from a tank truck, obtaining surface water from an off-site source during ONM site will be vegetated and gravel and will not generate air pollutants. Okay, thank you. Does proposal meet applicable federal and state air quality regulatory requirements? That answer is no. It does not kick you into having to submit other air quality items. Great. Planning Board members, are we okay? Am I, is the pace okay? Let me know if I'm going too fast or too slowly.
It's fine.
Next is item twenty-eight, estimated peak daily vehicle traffic to be generated. The answer is one vehicle per day. Estimated peak hourly traffic volume less than one vehicle per hour. How are these figures estimated? Explain or cite the methodology used. This is based on, the answer is based on experience with solar projects and industry standards. It is generally accepted that solar projects do not require regular daily access. The site is secured by perimeter fencing and a gate to prohibit public access. Next, item twenty-nine, how many vehicle access points are to be provided from a road? That answer is one. What is the posted speed limit? The road from which vehicles access the proposed development or use, forty-five miles per hour. Number thirty. Names of contractors responsible for earthwork or any soil disturbance and their respective MDEP basic, advanced erosion control certification numbers. That answer is to be determined. TRC team, are you thinking that should this be approved, then you would sub that out?
Yeah, Steve would hire, would hire the contractors to do the work and at that point it would be up to them to have the, the DEP certification.
Got it. Thank you. So that's the number.
So Peter Rushton. Yeah. Do we want to possibly make that a, a related data condition that, that get done prior to them starting? Do we want to make a side note here?
I think that's good. I just did the same thing, Pete. I had number thirty. Yep. Yeah, make a note please and I'm sure we'll, we'll have that on there. Okay, team, let's move on to the next one. Item thirty-one. Is a site or a structure located in the parcel listed on the National Register of Historic Places? The answer is no. The next, the next question has to do with how will the impact be to that, but there's no, it's not parcel is not listed on the National Historic Register of Places. Are any archaeological sites identified by Maine State Historic Preservation Commission present on the parcel? That answer is no. And the next, the next question has to do with that, so then there's no answer there. Number thirty-two, will equipment, machinery, inventory, parts, salvage, waste collection containers, dumpsters or other materials associated with the proposed use be stored outdoors? The answer is no. Project will not produce to require storage of such items. Moving down to the next question, how dumpsters be screened from view from neighbors and public roads? The answer is dumpsters are not required for operation and maintenance of project. Number thirty-three. The parcel include critical natural areas or significant wildlife habitat, including deer wintering areas as identified NMAP by the Maine Beginning with Habitat Program. That answer is no. So I just had a question about that. I guess this might be for the board, just, not that I don't believe this answer, but do we have that same Beginning with Habitat map for other references?
I think we have, I think we have them at the town office, but I can tell you that I'm sure that this is not one of them.
Thank you, Rich. I appreciate that. I was thinking sort of broadly that it would be good to put our hands on that for general discussion purposes.
And we've got the inland fish habitat map as attachment seven.
You guys are rock stars. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we know how to get that stuff.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, let's move on to the next one, which, let's see now. There's an area here about the Maine, the Natural Areas Program of Department of Agriculture, Forestry and Conservation. And we don't have, nothing is applicable there. Okay. Number thirty-four, if parcel includes wetlands identified on the National Wetlands Inventory Map, describe how impact to the wetlands will be avoided or mitigated. The answer is, the project is designed to avoid fill, clearing and any temporary disturbance in the wetlands and streams. Setbacks from all protected resources will be a minimum of sixty feet. Erosion controls will be established and maintained during construction. And TRC team, I think probably one of your attachment talks about the erosion control methods, is that correct?
That's correct. We have a erosion control plan in the drawing sheet as well as the stormwater management and phosphorus control report.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
And another point on that is, um, we had a site specific wetland delineation done on the property. So it's a little more detailed and site specific than what the N W I mapping would show.
Okay, thank you.
So, so what attachments are those?
A stormwater management report is attachment number 13. And the, the drawing package with the erosion control plan is attachment number nine.
Thank you.
And attachment six has its scenario map with the wetland delineation and stream delineation.
Okay, thanks. Okay. I think we're on item 35. Um, is development or change of use located on a hilltop or a lake shore? That answer is no. Next is item 36. Other than from safety signals and other emergency warning devices, will maximum noise levels produced by proposed use exceed 60 decibels between 7:00 a.m. and 9:30 p.m.? Or 45 decibels between 9:30 p.m. and 2:07 a.m.? This is at the property lines or the lakeshore. They have answered no. Will the noise standards be exceeded at any time during the course of a single day for more than 15 minutes? They have answered no. Um, identify which activities are likely to generate sound in excess of the above standards. Please list and describe. Uh, during operation, electrical components will generate noise levels below 60 decibels and will not generate noise during the evenings. Construction will generate expected noise levels during weekday normal work hours as expected from heavy equipment during site preparation. What noise monitoring suppression and mitigation buffering measures are proposed? Please describe. The project has been designed to maintain a dense vegetated buffer between construction and adjacent dwellings.
So if I can interject just a little bit, this is, this, the items that we felt warranted a little more detail and discussion than the space allotted. So up in the, the cover letter, there is a noise section highlighted where we provide some specific discussion on the, the actual equipment that's going to be there and then calculations showing what the noise will be at the property line.
Okay.
And that, that word references, uh, main DP, chapter 375, uh, which is the standard for environmental protection as it relates to site law project. Um, and we also apply to five decibel penalty to our equipment to, to be on the conservative side. But there is
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. See. I think we are on item 37. Will outdoor development construction activities be conducted between the hours of 9:30 p.m. and 7:00 a.m.? The answer is no. Are residential uses present on abutting land parcels? The answer is yes. Uh, if yes to both, what noise suppression measures will be implemented? List and describe. Tom, is that what you were saying before?
Well, what was that? I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm on item 37.
Yep.
It reads, are residential uses present on abutting land parcels? And the answer is yes. The checklist then says, if yes to both, what noise suppression measures will be implemented? And it's list and describe. So, and just to, so you know, what I'm seeing has nothing listed here. So my question is, um, is the answer to number 37 found in what you just talked about?
It is, but our, our answers weren't yes to both on that section. So we didn't need to fill in anything below it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Right to both. Okay, gotcha. There was only yes to one part of them. All right. Um, mo- moving on to item 38, provide the number, design, location, and illumination intensity of outdoor lighting fixtures. The answer is lighting will be limited to security lights at the inverter station. Nighttime illumination is not needed. What will light illumination from the development or use be on any property line exceed point five foot candles? The answer is no. Number 39, describe off-street parking to be provided for the development use, including number of general use, parking spots, handicap spaces, and oversized vehicle to be provided. The answer is off-street parking is not required. How often and where will delivery trucks be unloaded and loaded? The answer is during operation and maintenance deliveries will not be required. Will vehicles loading and unloading protrude? Code, uh, no, is the answer. Will delivery vehicles need to back into loading, loading areas from a public road? The answer is no. How many loading bays will be provided? Not applicable. Forty, describe measures to be provided for a security and fire protection for the proposed development or use. The answer is the project will be encircled by a seven-foot tall security fence with a locked gate at the entrance. Box box will be placed at the gate for first responder access. A fire suppression plan will be provided to the town. Is the footprint of any building greater than 10,000 square feet? The answer is no. Will development or use exceed the capabilities of the Belgrade Fire Department? The answer they have provided is no. Will development or use depend upon the Kennebec County Sheriff's Department for Security Services? They have answered yes.
Uh, Pete, Pete Russian, can we just back up quickly? Uh, the question, uh, getting, uh, regarding the Belgrade Fire Department. Uh, is there anything, any documentation, like an attachment from, uh, the fire, fire chief responding to the question?
So I sent, I sent an email to both, uh, Dan McKenzie and Travis Burton, uh, with the site plan. And we did not receive a response.
So Pete, do you want to, um, for our records, make sure we have a response part of our?
I, I, I think so. You know, uh, somehow or another, um, I'd like to see a response, one way or the other, from the fire department. I agree, that would be appropriate.
In addition to the plan, um, also at the, at the front in the cover letter, there's an emergency services section where we provide some firefighting information on this type of facility. Um, that way the department will have some, some technical guidelines and how to develop their standard operating procedures. And that was also provided to Chief McKenzie and, and Burton. So I know they have it. I just haven't heard back yet.
Okay, we'll, we'll follow somehow or another.
Yeah.
Okay, or someone will.
So I have a question, um, and this is for the TRC team there. Um, just kind of new ground for, for Belgrade to have a, uh, an electric generating producer or electric generation facility by having these arrays. Um, would, would the fire or emergency type of response stuff that you submitted, Tom, to the, to the, uh, both Travis and Ryan or, or was it Travis and who else?
Dan McKenzie.
And, um, that's, I don't know, is that kind of outside their wheelhouse? I mean, fighting fires with electrical generation stuff or?
Yeah, it likely is. And, and that's the, the beauty of this sort of facility. You know, there's no threat to human life. So there's no reason for the department to enter the facility, uh, in the event of a, of a fire. Uh, there's sufficient space around the outside for them to kind of surround and drown and contain. So that's basically what our plan is is built around is the idea that you're not protecting somebody's life if there's a fire in there. So just stop if that's been a more concern.
Okay, got it. Thank you. All right. I think we are on the second half of item 40, which is will development or use depend upon the Kennebec County Sheriff's Department for Security? That answer is yes. And note, if yes, provide a letter from Kennebec County Sheriff that sheriff is able to provide requested security services. And was that an attached document to the app?
That might have been a misinterpretation of the question. In general, it will be in their service area, obviously, but there won't be, you know, K S D onsite or needing to provide security for any reason.
So should that be a no?
It probably should have been a no. Yeah.
Okay, so.
They're for security services.
Right, we don't need security services. So, so that's probably one of those things that we'll just make a note and say, um, I want to amend that, change it from a yes to a no, right? Easily done. Just point to it.
Yep, I'll, I'll mark it up.
All right, thanks. And then, and standard practices, um, when they do that, they can, uh, date an initial, right?
Yep.
Uh, all right, everybody, let's move on to item 41. Is the proposed development or use located within a village district? As shown in the Belgrade Con- 2014 Conference of Plan District Map. The answer is no. Uh, moving on to item 42, describe vegetative screening to be provided and maintained along all public roads. Answer is a vegetative buffer of native species, including white pines, will be maintained along Route 135. And a dense stand, stands of planted conifers will be maintained. These features will provide multiple layers of screening. Parentheses, five to 10 feet wide and approximately 50 feet wide respectively. Number 43, describe vegetative screening to be provided and maintained along property line with abutting residential properties. E G depth, length, vegetation composition also show on site plan. Uh, the answer, the nearest dwelling to the south is 150 feet from the project with forested, forested vegetation in between. To the north, the nearest dwelling is 225 feet away with forested vegetation in between. Okay. So on the site plan, is, is your site plan team talk about the vegetation composition?
Um, I don't know that it talks about the composition, but the aerial photo that the site is the base map for the site shows the narrow swellings. Um, it shows the locations of the, the conifer trees, the old fir trees, um, between Route 135 and solar panels. Um, so it seems fairly, fairly self-explanatory on the, on the aerial and the site layout.
Okay. All right, thank you. Number 44, provide number, size, square feet, location, anchoring, and height off-ground level of each proposed advertising or informational sign. The answer, advertising and informational signs are not required. Forty-five, will any exterior signs be illuminated? They've answered no. Moving on to item 46, is any sign to be electron- electronically digitally changeable sign? The answer is no. Forty-seven, describe solid waste to be generated, including types of waste. Uh, the answer, ONM, operation and maintenance will not generate solid waste. Uh, yeah. Moving on to item 48, will oil, petroleum, or propane be stored or handled onsite other than project construction? Heating oil tank smaller than 330 gallons or propane tank, 200 gallons or smaller. They have answered yes. If yes, describe types and volume of products. So the answer is you let electric transformer will be delivered to the site with about 525 gallons of dielectric mineral oil installed. Oil will not be handled or transferred. Moving on, how will be stored onsite? Check all the apply underground tanks or above above A S Ts drums or other. Oil will not be stored, but will be in an enclosed tank as part of the system that operates the transformer. Which state federal permits, registrations, notifications, or approvals are required to store or handle oil, petroleum, or propane associated with, with this proposal? The answer is none required. If an underground oil storage facility is proposed, provide D E P registration number, none required. If a main state fire marshal permit is required for construction, provide permit number, none, not required. Is a U S E P A spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan required? The answer is no. Number 49, will hazardous substances be stored onsite or used? The answer is no. Fifty, will hazardous, special, or universal wastes, including waste, waste antifreeze be generated by the project or use? Uh, answer is no. Moving on to and thank you, everybody, for your patience as we go through this. Okay, if you've answered yes, your any questions, 50, 48 to 50, provide the following information. So will any portion of the development or use be located in a significant sand and ac- gravel aquifer as mapped by Maine Geological Survey? No. Will any portion of your project or use be within 300 feet of a private drinking water well? 1,000 feet of a public drinking water supply well? Or within the source water protection area of a public drinking well as mapped by the main drinking water program? The answer is yes. TRC team, is that right?
Yeah, the project is about within 300 feet of some of the abutting residences that have wells.
Okay.
Actually, Peter, number 51 didn't even need be answered because they answered no to questions 48 through 50.
That's what I was wondering about.
Oh, actually, yeah, yeah.
Did they have a yes somewhere?
Wasn't it really required to fill it out?
Okay. So.
Well, technically we do have some petroleum for the transformer oil on number 48. So that was a yes.
Got it. So we'll stay true to it and continue on. It's good. So I think we're on item 52. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, what, what item, uh, item 51 down, you know, says, uh, let's see, were they, Ian said yes. Where, willing, it was the, the distance of the, uh, drinking water, 300 feet. That's yes. And then no, then you got a paragraph talking about the public drinking water and all this stuff. I mean, is that your answer there?
No, that's part of the application form.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Right, which is good, right? Because that's, that's good stuff on the, the significant sand and gravel aquifer.
Okay. So we're moving to 52. All right.
I believe so.
Okay.
So 52, will the proposed activity discharge pollutants to any surface water bodies or groundwater, including by way of a subsurface wastewater disposal system? They have answered no. Uh, moving on to the next one. 53, will any groundwater discharge result in, in any groundwater quality measure exceed one half of federal primary drinking water standard or state maximum exposure drinking water guideline? Uh, the answer is no. Groundwater discharge not required. Uh, will groundwater exceed any federal secondary drinking water standard? They've answered no. Fifty-four, will groundwater withdrawal, including for a drinking water supply or alterations to including for a drinking water supply or alterations to site surface water recharge characteristics lower the groundwater table beyond the property line? The answer is no. On to fifty-five, provide the total area in square feet of impervious area of the development or use, including but not limited to the footprint area of all structures as well as paved and gravel, parking, roads, walkways, et cetera. And it looks like they've calculated the total area is seventeen thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet. Provide the total square feet of disturbed area of the development or change of use. The answer is nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Disturbed area includes the total area cleared of native vegetation, covered with fill, stripped of soil, graded, excavated or covered by structures, walkways, parking or storage areas. They have applied an answer of total limits of disturbance is thirteen point seven acres. Okay. How many linear feet of new road or driveway is proposed? They have answered seven hundred and fifteen feet. Item fifty-eight. In which lake watershed or sheds is the proposed development located? Please specify. They have answered the Belgrade Stream and Mesolonski Lake watersheds. Number fifty-nine. What is the allowed phosphorus export in pounds per acre as established by Article six B of the ordinance? See the table of permitted phosphorus export. They have answered point six eight, point zero six eight, I'm sorry, pounds per acre of phosphorus.
I just want a quick question on that. Is that a lot or a small amount? I have no idea. Any one of the DEP, some of our members here might kind of give me an idea. Just my own self-knowledge, yeah.
I don't think it's a lot, but I'm not an expert on that either. But, their calculations and the application certainly show that it's less than allowable, or their project will be less than what's allowable.
Okay. Yep, that's good. Okay, thank you. Um. Moving on to item sixty, has the develop, development received a stormwater management permit from Maine DEP under Maine Stormwater Management Law? They have answered yes. And we, we say, if yes, provide a copy of this permit as part of this application, and I think Tom, I think has addresses and said it is part of it. I can't remember which, which attachment is, but I think they did say, Tom, help me, what, what, which one was it?
That's attachment eight.
Attachment eight.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, therefore, we're on to one. Here or in your stormwater and phosphorus control plan provisions for monitoring and inspection, maintenance and use restrictions for stormwater phosphorus control measures, including buffer strips and infiltration systems. Their answer is please refer to the stormwater management plan attached as part of this application. And the, they've reminded us it was attachment eight.
What attachment is that again?
I believe eight, is that, did I hear that right?
Eight has the permits that were issued by DEP and the actual stormwater management plan is, is attachment thirteen that has all the calculations and maps that Tom put together to, basically that were ultimately sent to DEP as our stormwater plan.
Thanks. Thank you. I believe we're on item sixty-two. Is the development or change of use to include, check applicable. And we list a number of things. Their answer is none are applicable because they're not doing mineral extraction, they're not doing overnight accommodations, no bed and breakfast, no telecommunications tower, no wind energy facility.
I think all the rest is questions, Peter, dealing with the specific projects, I think, mining and gravel pits and.
Yeah, we have quite a, quite a long session in there for that stuff. And they, I'm just kind of scrolling through to get beyond those things. Several pages. So. And they, they have taken the time to say not applicable for each of these, just for the record, just so everybody knows. For each of these other things. No wind turbines. No gravel mining. And then, so what I have done, I've gone down to, see, through page twenty-nine of thirty-eight. Next is page thirty, and it says, please read and sign. I certify to the best, to the best of my knowledge, the information submitted in this application, the attached materials are true, correct and accurate. I understand that before this application can be determined to be complete by the town of Belgrade, all requested information must be submitted.
I didn't have you sign it, I guess.
I think I signed.
I did.
Yeah.
You signed this, did the hard copy maybe that we submitted?
Steve, had, had you signed a copy that was submitted to the town?
We're just wondering.
Debating that, whether we forgot to have Steve sign it.
I remember signing it, but is the copy that you people have unsigned or?
That was my, my mistake. But we can take care of that, have this signed and faxed over, scanned and emailed tomorrow.
Yeah, we will, we will get you a signed page there.
Okay.
Is it possible that Nick has the original and it is signed?
It's possible.
The ones I have are not signed as well.
Yeah, I think that, I think that was my mistake.
Alright, no problem, we'll get, we'll get over that, right? No big deal.
We'll get it, we'll, I'll get this scanned and emailed over.
I've signed it now. Sorry about that.
No problem. Alright, so, gentlemen, thank you, I'm just kind of going on to the next page. Next page says minimum required application attachments.
I think we'll cover those in the checklist when we go through the checklist.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so at this point, first of all, an excellent application. I think, there were a couple of things, right, that we, we wanted to have worked out, but there weren't many. One was the signing, sign part. Another thing, I think Pete, was it question forty? Would like to see the response from the fire chief, right?
Yes.
And I think also, was it question thirty? I can't remember what that was.
There was one on having the erosion control number certification, DEP certification, erosion control.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, great. Kind of smaller stuff, but just stuff we want to make sure we, we talked about with you folks.
Yep.
Okay. I think we've, this is a question to the planning board. Are we okay to move on to the checklist? Yes.
I think so.
Okay, alright, thanks. Nick, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Um. I know many times when, when we do this live or together, I might have a pen with me, and as we go through the checklist, there's something that's missing, I'll star it and then save that to hand to you so we could give it back to the applicant to say, these are the items that we still need information on or something. Um, in, in this case, I can't do that. So if we run across something, can you just make a note?
Yes, I'll follow along and check the appropriate boxes and star whatever you guys need me to star.
Okay. Alright, so, so on the submitted application, we have, is everybody with me? We're on page like thirty-three perhaps? Again, many thanks, you guys, for your patience as we go through this. I'm, I don't know how it is, but with other towns, maybe it's more laborious, I don't know. But thank you for hanging in there with us. So on this page, I, I have nothing for the applicant name and nothing for the development name. I see a highlight for a hundred dollar fee paid. Says buildings and land. Let's just go through the checklist. First item is the application form. Are we saying that it is complete? And I need to, from the.
I think it's, it's complete except for the items that we just talked about. The, the, whatever.
Okay, so now.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? Does Gary notify the landowners within five hundred feet? You know, that's just above that. Nick might know.
Um, once you guys seen this complete, those notices will be going out tomorrow for the June eighteenth meeting.
Okay, and that June eighteenth meeting will be a combination of application meeting and public hearing? Because don't we have to do a public hearing on a commercial, okay, yeah, okay.
Yep, yep.
We have to notify the abutters, and then at that point, if approved, we'd go through the findings of fact, correct?
Yeah, right.
That time. Okay. Okay, so, next is applicant's agent or authorization letter.
It's there.
It's there, thank you. So that's complete. Copy of deed, options, sales agreement, lease or other documentation of title, right or interest, is that?
That, it's there.
Thank you. Any written waiver request?
They didn't have any waiver requests, did they?
Okay, I don't think so.
No.
Copy of tax map of property.
It's there.
Copy of Kennebec County soil map of property.
It's there.
Copy of USGS topo map showing property location.
It's there.
Copy of Belgrade shoreline zoning map showing property location.
It may not be there because it's not close to the shoreline zone.
Okay. So.
I, excuse me, Peter, I requested the shoreline zoning map and Gary Fuller said that he would attach it to the application. I'm not sure if he provided that, but that was the response I got to that request.
So thank you very much, Steve. I think since you've asked for that to be attached, I think it's an action item for us to follow up with Gary about that. Nick, would be, would you be so kind as to follow up with Gary about getting that?
Yeah, I'll talk to him Tuesday.
Alright, thank you. Next item here is a copy of the flood insurance map showing the property.
It's there, Peter.
Next is the copy of the national wetlands inventory map showing the property.
It's there.
Next. We have Maine Geological Survey Significant Sand and Gravel Aquifer Map Showing Property Location.
I don't see one in my packet.
Yeah, it should be number twelve, attachment twelve.
Okay. You had it in such good order that I was just going through the attachments and now that, that one's.
It's in there somewhere.
Yeah, I see it, so.
Thank you, Craig. I'm now on to page thirty-four. Um, copy of Maine Drinking Water Program Map of Public Drinking Water Supply Showing Property Location.
That's on the aquifer map.
Thank you. Next, copy of MDOT Highway Entrance or Access Permit.
I think, wasn't that the issue that we talked about, that the application is there, but the permit came after the application was submitted? They're going to provide us a copy?
Correct, yeah, we have that.
Yep. So that's something we, you know, I'm taking it on good faith that it's there, we just need to receive it, right?
Is that best to email to Gary or should we send it to Nick or what's the best way to get that over?
From, from my point of view, Nick is the most important guy in the room, always make sure he gets it, but Gary?
If you guys could, just send it to me and Gary, just so we both got it.
Right. Thanks, moving on. Next, copy of MDOT Traffic Movement Permit and Traffic Movement Study. That would be not applicable, correct?
Alright, correct.
Next, copies of other required state or local permits. Probably have some things in there, do we or do we not?
I think we got DEP permit by rule permit here.
Yep.
Two of them, so there's a NRPA permit by rule and a chapter five hundred stormwater permit by rule, those are included.
Thank you. Um. Next. Therefore by thirty-six, site development plan drawn to scale, showing a whole bunch of stuff that I won't read out, but was that supplied to the town, gentlemen?
Yes.
So typically, we get to unravel those things and hold them up and we can ooh and ah over them, but we can't do that now, so.
We got one here, we got a set here.
Alright, thank you.
Full-size set over, which is what Gary had suggested, so.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item, I'm sorry, next page thirty-five. Which says detail to scale drawing showing location and construction specifications of drainage features, roads, sidewalks, access points, driveways, parking, traffic control features, fire control structures and public improvements. That too, is that part of that?
Yes.
Next. Documentation meets applicable state and federal air quality regulatory requirements.
Yeah, not applicable.
Thank you. Next, Soil Erosion Control Plan as from Article six, section three. Great. Thank you. Next, MDEP Certified Contractor Name and Number.
That's one of the pending items that we'll, we'll get before construction.
That's a star, Nick, on that one, right? Um. Location of Site Structure Listed on National Register of Historic Places. It's not a- That's also the same for the next item, which is, I'm sorry, Rich, go ahead.
I didn't say anything.
Okay.
Must have been my turn pages.
Next is Location of Maine Historic Preservation Commission Archaeological Sites. Is that also not applicable?
Certainly not there, I, I, we know that there aren't any there.
Right.
We have, yeah, we have a letter to that effect from the Maine Historic Commission.
Thank you. Next, Information Needed to Meet Air Quality Standard, Article Six, Section One. That not applicable? Next, Nation Needed to Meet Access to Public Streets Standard, Article Six, Section Two. Access to Public Street Standard. Article Six. And this?
Another not applicable.
Next. Protection Measures for Historic and Archaeological Resources, Article Six, Section Four.
I think it's not applicable.
Agreed. Next. Estimated Quantities of Flammable, Combustible, and Hazardous Substances to be Stored, Handled, or Generated, Including Waste Oil and Antifreeze.
So we did provide an estimate for the mineral oil that'll be in the transformer.
Hey. Thank you. That would be complete, thank you. Next, Evidence Meets MDEP Siding Regulations for Oil Storage and Hazardous Substances Facilities. I would think about it the same way as the mineral oil of contained information that you've supplied, is that right?
Yeah, it's technically not applicable.
Got it, not applicable. Alright, thank you. Next, Copy of Application Provided by, Provided to Fire Chief by Planning Board CEO. So Nick, i- is that something that we would say complete because we would do that and supply a copy to the fire chief?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could take an action item to supply a copy, that'd be great, that we can say complete?
Yep, can do.
Thank you, Nick. Next, Other Information Needed to Meet Material Storage Standard, including Bulk Storage of Combustible and Flammable Materials and Hazardous Substances, Article Six, Section Five. Is that applicable?
No, no.
It's not. Um, next is a visual impact assessment.
Not applicable.
Not applicable. Okay. Next, Plan Based on IF&amp;W Critical Areas Program, Recommendations to Mitigate Impact on Natural Areas and Wildlife Habitat, Including Deer Wintering Areas.
Not applicable.
Thank you. Next, Other Information Needed to Meet Natural Resource Protection Standard, that's Article Six, Section Six.
And that's provided with the NRPA Permit by Rule?
Alright, moving on, I'm on, now on page thirty-six. Is, is the board requiring Post-Development Noise Monitoring and Reporting Plan? If not required, mark not applicable. If required, mark complete upon receipt. So to the members, do we, do we think based on the nature of this development that's being proposed, that any type of, type of noise monitoring is, is required?
I wouldn't think so.
I would agree.
Craig, what do you think? Is there anything?
No.
Thank you. Great, moving on to the next one. It says Information Needed to Meet Noise Standards, so that's not applicable here. Next, Exterior Lighting and Plan Specifications for Lighting Fixtures. I think that would be, based on the answers that we've seen, is, would be complete.
Yeah.
Agree?
Yep.
Next, Is the Board Requiring a Post-Development Light Monitoring and Reporting Plan? If not required, mark not app, not applicable. If required, mark complete.
I would say not applicable.
I, I would say not applicable either. Do the board members feel the same way?
I agree.
Not applicable.
Next, Information to Meet Parking Standards, that's under Article Six, Section Nine.
Really, I'm gonna be a parking to speak of.
Right. So I guess I would say that based on the information they've supplied, I would call it complete because they've said that in the application.
Yeah.
So I would say complete. Next, Written Statement from Fire Chief on Capacity of Fire Department to Provide Adequate Protection. We have not heard back from the fire chief. I think Pete Sergeant, you brought this up. I think it's a good thing, just for our own records to be complete, to have heard something about this. How do the board members feel about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, Written Statement from Sheriff's Department Approving Any Proposed Security Measures. On the information supplied in, in the application, they're not counting on the sheriff's office for any security measures, really. How do the board members feel about this? Did we just say complete?
Yeah, I, I would say so if they're not depending on any security from Sheriff's Department.
I think at the beginning, I did say that the Sheriff's Department was gonna be the, taking care of any security, right? We did talk about something like that earlier, didn't we?
We did, we did. TRC team, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but does that kind of align with what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think we misinterpreted that question, so it should have said no, and we made a note to correct that application, so.
Yep, great, thanks. So is that one. Next is Other Information to Meet Public Safety and Emergency Services Standard, that's Article Six, Section Ten.
So we provided some information, but I guess we won't know until the fire chief weighs in if he wants more information, so maybe that's just a star for now.
Yeah, let's start that and like, I don't, I don't view it as a, as a big deal, but I would like to have a response from the fire chief on that. Even if it's, hey, it's not, it's nothing, we don't expect anything. Having it down is good. Um, let's see. I think one of the next one, which reads, Information to Meet Screening of Structures, Parking Lots, and Other Non-Residential Uses Standards, Article Six, Section Eleven.
I think, I think it is, it's complete, but when we review the application and discuss it, I, that's about the only problem, when I say problem, the only issue that I may have after reading the application and when we talk about is whether or not the screening is sufficient all the way along the road. I think it's kind of marginal in a couple places. But I also realize that the driveway is gonna go in there somewhere too. Hopefully not through the middle of the Christmas tree.
Yep, okay. We can decorate the trees, you know?
Yeah.
So I would agree that, that for the information supplied is considered complete.
Yeah.
Okay, next, To-Scale Profile Face-On View of Proposed Signs. I think there were no signs, right?
Correct.
So that would be not applicable?
Uh, I would say so.
Next, Other Information to Meet Sign Standard, I would say not applicable.
Correct.
Next is Stormwater Management Plan. The TRC, TRC team has told us one of the attachments is this.
Yeah, I'd say it's complete.
Complete. Other Information to Meet Stormwater Management Standard, I would say complete based on the submission.
Yeah.
Um, next, Sub-Fur Surface Waste Disposal Site Evaluation Form.
Not applicable.
Not.
There're not gonna be any toilet facilities or whatever there.
Right, same for the next thing about waste standards, right?
Yep.
Um, the next one, Groundwater Quality and Quantity Impact Assessment.
Uh, I'd say not applicable.
I would also.
I don't know any, anywhere in the audience where we talked about groundwater standards or anything like that. Maybe we did, but I missed it.
Yeah. Other board members agree on that? It'd be NA?
Yes, I agree, it's NA.
Okay. Next, Copy of Deed Restrictions Related to Drinking Water and Groundwater Protection.
Yeah, NA, right?
I would think NA.
Yeah, the, well, I guess, yeah, I would say so.
NA, Rich?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, moving on, I'm now on page thirty-seven. Uh, Copy of Maine Drinking Water Program, Public Water Supply, Approval and Source Water Protection Plan. That would be NA.
Yeah.
Next, Copy of MDEP Stormwater Management Permit.
I think that's in the app, in, in our application, is it not?
I believe it is.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep, thank you, Mark. Next, Phosphorus Export Control Method. I would say that was, that's part of the application that-
Yeah, yeah, I put complete.
Yep. Uh, Other Information to Meet Water Quality Standards, Article Six, Section Fifteen. I would say complete myself. There's not much going on, but I would say it's complete. What they've submitted. Um, next, Supplemental Site Plan Requirements for Mineral and Extraction Operations.
NA.
A. Uh, the next one is also NA.
I think the rest of these are probably relating to the specific projects' standards.
Right, because the next line says mineral extraction. The next one, all of these, uh, extraction. Get down to the bottom, near the bottom, there's talking about other specific things that this application is not, like accommodations. This is not on, it's not a telecommunications tower. Not a wind turbine. So I would say NA for the rest of page thirty-seven. And the last three items on page thirty-eight.
I would agree.
Are the board members okay with that too? Because-
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Um. So. At this point, I would sign this. So Nick?
Yeah.
He fell asleep, no.
What's up?
It takes a minute to unmute sometimes. Um, so quickly, I would have pen to paper and, and, and sign this part, this page here. Um, I can't do it that at this point. I don't know if you have a, a method that we would do that?
Um. So tomorrow, everything gets approved tonight. That needs a signature. I'll probably send out DocuSign tomorrow. And you guys will just sign it electronically. I just need three people on the permits and just you, Peter, on this one.
Yep. Okay. Okay, great. Um. Okay. How are we doing? It's, it's, well, we're at seven fifty-four. I know we started a little bit late. Um, so now we've gone through the checklist and we've gone through the application form. It seemed like there were just a couple little things, right? Uh, this is, this is a very good application, a very good application. Then there's a couple little things we need to get back to go forward, but having heard all of this, how does the board feel about the condition of this application?
What, what else we haven't, well, do we have to do anything right now? Can we break at this particular point? We're waiting upon them to react and through a few, two follow-up issues or what? Are we kind of finished with this stage? I think we are.
Yes, Pete, I think you're, you hit the nail on the head. We, we are waiting for a couple little things and there's some almost administrative things that I know that on, on the, the applicant side that they need to submit to Nick and stuff. One was, you know, making sure Steve has the signed copy of his application goes into town. We want to make sure we hear from the, from the fire chief and so on and, and that, those kinds of things. So there are a couple little things, but not many. Otherwise, we're in good shape. So. If we deem this as complete with, with a couple of exceptions, I think what we'd be doing is saying, and then would take a motion on it and vote. If that, if that were the case, then Nick could then notify the abutters and would have our hearing scheduled in two weeks. Does that sound good? Am I on track with everybody's thinking? Greg, Rich, Pete, does this sound-
So is that when we discuss everything and review it and discuss it and ask all of our questions?
And I'm assuming that when we have our meeting on the, what, the eighteenth, that we will probably be voting on the application as well because aren't they, the team solar fields need something by June nineteenth or something like that?
Yes, that's correct. So the, the schedule of the eighteenth works out very well for us if you can get to the point of voting on it at that meeting, that would be great.
Yep.
Do we need a, a motion to, or have we already concluded we have a complete application or do we need to vote on that?
Um, I'm trying, I'm trying to think, think about that. I think it would be appropriate to vote and to identify what we don't have. Uh, because there are a couple things. Uh, because there are a couple things, right? Um, which then sets the, the, the stage for a more, a full discussion on the eighteenth. The hearing, we go through any remaining items that we don't have tonight. And then, and then after that, we do findings of fact. And then go through that process. So, I don't, so I, I think, tell me how you guys think, it would be appropriate to vote on what we have.
I, I would agree, we vote on what we have and just identify the things that are missing.
Yep. So. Yeah, that sounds good, yep, okay. If that entertain a motion, and we'll, we'll try to do this as best we can with the items that we made notes about that we don't have, so. Anybody want to take a stab at it?
Uh. I didn't, I wasn't writing down all the issues that you found or whatever, but.
I got them.
I, I, you did, Craig?
No. I got part of them, yes.
I, I think Nick, did Nick get them?
One of them was, one of them was the DDP contractor number.
We need to get some feedback from the fire chief, which, um, I think they've got, I think Tom has contacted the fire chief, you, you guys just need to get some feedback from him. I need to get you the application form with Steve's signature. Um, I need to get you the, the actual final DOT issued permit for the driveway. And I think on one page I need to change the answer to no under the Kennebec Sheriff.
Think they did that.
I think we did that, so.
They'll do that.
That was a good motion.
So, so those are the things that, thank you for summarizing that, that, that is, is, I think, all that we still need.
Could I make, could I make a comment here? Uh, one, one of the items on the list about the site contractor and the DPD license, uh, we're not going to be, uh, hiring a site contractor until we get, uh, a contract with Central Maine Power Company approved, so we're not in a position to supply that at this time, but if you were to issue, uh, you know, an approval with that, with that requirement, that would, we would certainly be able to comply at the time that a contractor is hired.
Thanks, Stephen.
Permit condition.
Yeah. And that would be appropriate, so.
Yeah.
So, um, so the TRC, TRC team has summarized what we still don't have, and they, they know what they need to submit to us. Uh, and those are the outstanding issues, otherwise we have a very good application, so I think, um, just trying to guide this along a little bit, so a motion to, to accept what we have, uh, and then as TRC team has noted, the things that they need to supply, um, still would be appropriate, so. Take a stab at it.
Uh, Peter speaking, I, I make a motion that we preliminarily, uh, approve the application. And we have a few outstanding conditions and follow-up material.
Is it completeness, completeness of the application, correct?
Yeah, not the application itself, we're not approving it at this point.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Approving the completeness.
Okay, I'm with you, so we're, we are, um.
I would second the motion that we approve the completeness of the application with the, uh, three or four items that, uh, TRC is going to supply us.
Second.
Seconded, okay, any more discussion on this? No, if no, all those in favor, and we'll do a roll call as we go along, all those in favor? So.
A roll call. Rich Baker, yes.
Rich Baker, yes, Craig?
Yes.
Uh, Pete Sargent?
Yes.
Uh, Pete Rushton, yes. So, and, and nobody.
George abstain.
And George abstains, George, thank you very much. So at this point, um, I think we're okay, um, for the, this particular application.
Yeah.
Um. We each have some action items to attend to, TRC has a few smallish ones. I know we want to make sure we get, um, feedback from the fire chief. Otherwise, any other questions, TRC team for us?
Now, we appreciate your time and you guys ran a very professional, thorough meeting, we really appreciate it.
Well.
Yeah, we're more than willing to answer any more questions that you might have about project specifics. Now we're at a later time, so.
Okay. Well, we really appreciate your time as we, we, um, conduct a Zoom meeting for, for, uh, what otherwise is done in person, so thank you for your, um, and.
Guys.
Thank you for your time and patience as we do this. And, um, our next step will be to, you find folks on the eighteenth, right? Uh, and in between times, we'll get those little things, hopefully. And then at the eighteenth, we'll go through, uh, this and, um, vote on it, and then if, if, have findings of fact and, and then, and then go forward from there. So, anything else for us?
I, I.
Hey, Rich?
All right, I just reiterate again, uh, when we meet again and whatever, I'm going to be asking some questions about the screening on one thirty-five, um, that, uh, the two ends of it, so to speak. Uh, and, uh, just to let the TRC team know that I'll be asking some questions about that and whether or not the current buffer is adequate. Uh, the, the application said it was, I'm not sure I agree, but.
Okay, all right, thank you. And TRC team, did you hear Rich's concern there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yes, Solar Fields is willing to, uh, upgrade, uh, the buffer strip in any way that you, that the board feels is appropriate and needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Please, how much did you have to pay, did Jim Parker have to pay you to make Parker Station? I don't know if Jim Parker or not, but.
Actually, we don't call it Parker Station because they didn't, they didn't in the end want that, so the project is two forty-two Manchester Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, so for, for this particular application, I think we've done all we, we intended to do for tonight. Um, I would just want to be very clear, we'll see you folks on the, on the eighteenth in two weeks. And I think for the planning board, I wanted to make sure I ask a question about the other two remaining shoreline zoning permits. Do we want to tackle those now?
Uh, I'd rather not myself, but because I have to go to work very early tomorrow morning, so.
We've, we've already been more than two hours here tonight.
The people who submitted those applications, uh, they, they definitely want to answer, uh, very soon. They submitted them back in April, uh, one was early, uh, mid-April. So, they've been calling the office a lot, asking to get an answer, one was not very happy that he almost didn't make it on this, uh, on this agenda.
Oh.
So, but it's your call, but I just want to make you aware that there, they are, there are people waiting. And next agenda is, is it going to be, uh, it's going to be a, a beast as well.
Okay.
Peter, if I may weigh in?
Yes.
I, I would suggest we go ahead with them, um, the, um, uh, partly because I know Gary on one of them has had a lot of communications with Leroux and, uh, there's some issues with, that I have with both applications, and it actually may be that at least one of them will be found incomplete.
Okay.
Yeah, and one of them, I, my feeling is we can't approve it because there's already a thousand, that, that, put it this way, they have a shed within a hundred feet of the water, and that brings them over the thousand square feet for their addition.
Okay.
So, without them being there, I think we would have to deny it though, but, or table it or something.
Okay, I would say let's, let's forge ahead and try and, and reach, reach, provide back for information for the others, I know it makes it a longer night. Um, Pete, if you need to go to skip out and that's okay, um, George is back now.
Right, we would have a quorum.
We would have a quorum, so I totally understand, I, I do.
Okay, I, I'd like to, uh, sign off, and you have a quorum that should be, you know, very much acceptable, and I wish you a good evening, and, uh.
Thank, thank you, Pete.
You too, Peter.
All right. Have a good night, all right, thank you. So how do I, how do I sign off, I just do, uh, Nick, I think, um, can you move your cursor down to the lower right, you'll see a bar show up and it'll say leave in the right-hand corner.
I see it.
All right, click on that.
All right.
All right. There you go. You should.
It's harder to leave than to get.
Yeah. You can't get out, you gotta stick around. All right, um.
All right, see you later.
Yeah.
All right, Pete, thanks.
See you later.
Great. And, Mr. Bear is still here.
Well, I'm about to leave, but I wanted to tell you guys, you did a very good job, and it's a very complicated, uh, application, so I'm, I'm proud of you, and George, I'm not a special, I'm not sure myself whether you needed it to lose yourself, but I'm, I'm pleased that you, uh, you decided in the, on the side of caution to keep the town out of trouble and yourself out of trouble. So with that, guys, I'm leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Have a nice night. So. Okay, get rid of those guys, um. Does anybody have the other? Let's see.
Which one would start first?
Oh, here they are, so we went, so there was the Linda White one, which we've done, Margaret Leroux and Bishop?
I have both in paper copies, if that's helpful.
Okay.
And Anthony sent the thing out to me and Peter, I think.
Yeah.
We, Peter and I, we should, you have them, Craig?
It's, uh, have what?
Uh, the applications for Bishop and, and.
I don't have paper, but I do have it on my, on, in my email, I'll open it up so I can find out which one we start with.
Okay. Um. Yeah, you guys, which one is first, is it Bishop or Leroux on the agenda after?
Thought it was Bishop, but.
Let's do that one then. So Craig, we're going to go to the Bishop one? Excuse me. Okay. Oh my goodness. All right, um. We have, uh, an application for a permit, this is for a Christian bishop. We have no application number, no map, no lot listed up top, but in the item three, it says map forty-seven, lot ten. This is on Meselonski Lake. They, they propose to construct a two-car garage, twenty-four by twenty-eight, um, feet, I would assume. Um. See. When did you purchase the property? Oh, so. Oh. Doesn't really matter much, but he said four fifteen, I don't know if that means April fifteenth or April of two thousand fifteen. Um, total lot area. An acre and a half or something, or acre and two-thirds, or something. Lot area within shoreline zone, thirty thousand square feet. Totals, uh, square footage of unvegetated surface is twenty-nine, twenty-three. The present structure square footage is twenty-five, twenty-three. They want it. They want to add, am I reading this right, they want to add six hundred seventy-two feet?
Yes.
Two-car garage.
Got it. Okay, I'm scrolling down and onto the next page, and they have a drawing of some, which is not bad, they have a, uh, dimensions, it looks like, uh, distance to Meselonski Lake. So. What is the distance from the lake to where they proposed to do the garage, do we know that? Thank you, Craig, one ninety-one. All right. So. This is under two acres. Uh, I guess what I'm initially looking at is why is this here before us? This is a.
A non-conforming lot.
Non-conforming lot, right? And there are several structures already there, it looks like in a guest house, probably a main structure, existing main structure, and then I'm not sure what this other thing is, and the shed. Tell me if I'm looking at this incorrectly, are there four structures there, one, two?
It looks like it, I don't know what the, uh, oh, we know one's a leach field.
Okay. So three structures and a leach field, I see a septic tank and a septic tank. Okay. So, um. Hmm. What, do we know what the? Are we looking at twenty percent coverage here at all, I just wanted to toss it out there?
No, we're not.
It's well under, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty percent, uh, coverage would be, um, fourteen thousand two hundred fifty square feet.
Yeah, that would be a lot, okay. Thank you.
This is a good-sized lot, actually, even though it's narrow.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so what concerns do we have here, gentlemen? Because this is, this is proposed structure is well back.
Yeah, if the, uh, uh, it might be kind of minor, but they're supposed to have some pictures with their application or photos or whatever, but uh, this is a new structure back. Yeah, but the only issue that I could think of myself is, uh, was lot coverage, and if his numbers are correct, then he isn't at twenty percent.
Right.
My question, since we don't have a profile drawing of the garage, uh, is just verification that is indeed single-story and, um, verification that it's going to be on a concrete pad. Uh, and, uh, and as a, and if so, on, um, you know, it's not a pole building or something crazy like that, um, then, uh, that triggers the need for the, uh, DEP certified contractor.
Right. Yeah, we're, we're lacking some information on this, right?
Well, we're, and, um, I mean, we, we put as a question at number nine, I mean, I, it's not a big deal, but, um, uh, that, that question was. I mean, I, it's not a big deal, but, um, uh, that, that question was not answered.
Yeah. Did. Did they talk to anybody? Like, Nick, did they come in and talk to you and say, hey, what's up with this?
He told me he talked to Gary. Like I said, this was submitted back in April, mid-April. So, and this, and this wasn't going to be on tonight's agenda, but he called back a week ago. Uh, very upset that it wasn't on this week's agenda. And so, uh, we threw it on and that's all I know about it.
Okay. We know the height of the building or anything?
No.
Uh, you know, it'd be nice to get verifika- I mean, we could deal with it through a, uh, conditional approval. But it would be nice to get verification that, you know, there's not going to be any human occupancy or.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the application isn't for human occupancy, but, uh, we've seen how that goes.
Right. So that would be something I think we should, if we want to act on this and taxpayer wants, wants something. You sound upset at Nick or at the town office anyway. I think, um, if, if we do decide to act on it, I might recommend we have, uh, plenty of, um. Conditions. That being one of them, George, about the. Not fit for human or not constructed for occupancy, right?
I mean, in all likelihood, it's like, you know, a very straightforward, one-story garage, uh, on a concrete pad. Uh, it's just, you know, without access to the applicant or Gary. Uh, we just don't know for sure.
Yeah.
So, question number, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Question number six. Says, um, existent sewage disposal. Not applicable, not adding any living space.
Oh, right. Good point. That should be clear.
Yeah.
Okay, good point, Craig. So. We don't, uh, I mean, we're kind of assuming that's going to be a simple structure with the, uh, the, the maximum height. Of the structure should not exceed twenty-five feet, right?
Thirty-five feet.
Oh, thirty-five feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be a pretty big garage if it's thirty-five feet high.
I know, but in the absence of seeing a diet, some kind of diagram or plan, I think we need to tell them.
Yeah.
This is what we have to go on.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we could approve it with two conditions or, or three conditions. Uh, one is, uh, to provide, you know, the shoreline, uh, the certified contractor name and number. At prior to construction, uh, deal with the stormwater off the roof and that the structure's height can, uh, not exceed thirty-five feet.
Yep.
I mean, we're kind of designing it, but.
You know, it, uh, yeah, I'm kind of bummed. I'm kind of bummed, quite frankly, when I see this because.
Not to mention not having an application number. I mean, that's not on him, but.
Right.
Yeah, there, it's either that or.
There is one, oh, I was gonna say, there is one online. It's twenty, application twenty.
Okay, good.
You say we either approve it with those three conditions, George said, or else we either table it or deny it. Or tell them it's incomplete or whatever. And, uh, that's, I think that's our two options.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I guess my, I prefer, uh, well, I, I shouldn't say I prefer. To make, um, to put lipstick on this pig, uh, I would opt for, um, uh, approving it by, uh, with conditions.
Is that a motion?
Putting pig, uh, putting lipstick on a pig?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I will make a motion if it's appropriate at this time.
It is.
Um, Craig, you, were you gonna say something? I, I didn't.
I was gonna say pretty much the same thing as you, whereas beyond a hundred feet and everything.
Yeah.
Uh, so go ahead and make your motion.
Yeah, if it was closer, I, I think I'd feel differently. Uh, so my motion is to approve the application, uh, with conditions. Uh, number one, uh, that, uh, prior to the start of construction. The name and number of the DEP certified contractor be provided to the code enforcement officer. Um, number two, uh, that the height of the, um, garage. Uh, be thirty-five feet or less, maximum of thirty-five feet or less. And thirdly, um, that stormwater from, uh, the garage roof be handled. In accordance with DEP best management practices.
Motion. Second, thank you, Craig. Um, any more discussion on this? The only point I would want to make is that, um. It's, I'm glad we're helping out this taxpayer, but it's a little bit of a disservice to everybody else. That we asked to have a complete, um, application. It's not that burdensome to have those couple of things filled out correctly. Um, and to take the time with our town staff to do this. So. At any rate, having said that, I'll get off my high horse and, uh, we'll move on. Um, any other points to discuss?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, and we'll do a roll call. So all those in favor, George Seal?
Yay.
Uh, Craig Alexander?
Yes.
In favor, uh, Rich Baker?
Yes.
And Peter Rushton, yes. Uh, none opposed. Uh, Nick, for the record, unanimously approved. Having said that, let's move on to the, the next item, which will be, uh, pretty much our last one. Are we all ready to do the Leroux, uh, to examine the Leroux application?
Yes.
Yes.
This is, uh, application twenty twenty-three, found on map sixteen lot, double lot one. Um, the application shows it's in the shoreline zone. Um, the application is for property located on seventeen, seven sixteen Horse Point Road, Belgrade, Maine. Map sixteen lot, double lot one on Great Pond. Uh, they propose to. Am I reading this correctly? Raised deck, ten by eleven and a half?
Yeah, they have a landing there now, so they want to build a deck.
Oh, so they want to take it. Okay, gotcha.
Landing's not that size.
Thank you. So this is a deck. Go from a landing to a deck. They have two bedrooms. They're not adding anything there. They bought it back in nineteen ninety. This is before us because it's a non-conforming lot. Is that correct? Looks like point three four acres.
Right, and, and structure.
And non-conforming structure. What is the total area of woody vegetation? Oh, cleared openings, twelve thousand square feet. Okay. So this is the one that there's a main structure somewhere and then a shed somewhere else? Is that right?
There's a shed within a hundred feet. And that has to be calculated into the thousand square feet. And when they add this, uh, addition or whatever, the deck, it brings them to nine hundred and ninety-nine. But they, we've got to include the, uh. Eight by ten, is it, uh, shed?
Yeah.
I don't think we can approve it as proposed.
And the applicants are not here to, uh, discuss this. Um, but that's okay. Uh, we can still proceed. Um, and I suggest we point to, as we go through this, point to, um. The sections of the ordinance that are bringing us to our decision as we go along. We, we should be on, uh, basically. Section twelve, right? Non-conformance.
Uh, yep.
And.
On page ten.
Yeah, starting on ten. Okay, well, see, okay. So the amount of square feet that they have now, the cabin is eight eighty-four, right? The shed, if we add that in, that's another eighty, right? So that's going to be nine seventy-four. Am I doing my math right? Tell me if.
I was waiting for Rich to respond.
Oh, eighty, I'm sorry. You, Craig, you're right. Nine sixty-four, right? We have the shed and the existing cabin where it would be at nine sixty-four. Um, that's before adding the deck. Need to do that. Like.
Is what, a hundred fifteen square feet?
Yeah.
So that brings us to a thousand seventy-nine square feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and they're limited to a thousand, correct?
Within seventy-five feet, yes.
And, uh.
Rich, how far is that shed?
I have to take my, uh, I think I gotta take my suggestion or my recommendation back. That thousand square feet is within seventy-five feet of the water, as George just said. The shed is back at eighty-one feet.
Right.
Got it.
So. Uh, forget that I even suggested that we can't approve it because of the thousand square foot.
So, because, so the shed should be included, but it's back beyond seventy-five feet, right?
Yeah, it's included in the, that, that, once you get beyond seventy-five feet, you can have fifteen hundred square feet.
Right, right.
So that, they're, they're okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. So if they're okay in total. Right, with the. Existing cabin, the shed, back little ways, and then adding the deck. From a square footage perspective, they're okay.
Yeah, they'll be at nine ninety-nine according to the calculations.
Okay, and so, and it's, and Rich, this is going, uh, parallel to the shore, if I'm seeing this correctly. So it's not increasing non-conformity, my.
That's correct, yeah.
So do you have any objections to the orientation and what they're proposing to do from?
I, I do not.
Okay, um, George?
Um, I have a issue that, uh, I actually exchanged emails with Gary about. Because I saw he apparently has had a lot of dealings with these people given the letter that they sent. And, uh, have figured out that there's, um, three errors on the application. All having to do with the area of the lot. Uh, the lot is not, as it turns out, point three four acres. Um, as indicated in, uh, question seven and then on the site drawing. But, uh, fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet or point three five acres. And that's important because if it was point three four acres, they would be, uh, truly, if that was the actual square footage. They would exceed the twenty percent rule.
Oh my.
Listen, because they're right at, right up against it now.
So.
So.
Edit these things, right? Cause, uh. Six. Twenty percent would be what?
Well, twenty percent would be two thousand nine hundred sixty-two square feet. They'd be thirty-eight square feet over. The, um, so point three four acres is fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten square feet. But, uh, and that's problematic. But if they, but what they really have, according to Gary, is fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Except that's not what the application says.
Right.
There's a conflict. So it. Incomplete or inaccurate or bu- or both.
Right. Yep. It, it, uh, it may appear to be a, a small thing and maybe they erred on the side of caution. I don't know. Or, or just didn't, I don't know. But, um, so what are your thoughts about how to? Do anything with this application?
Well, what I had suggested, Gary, I, I, because he, like I said, had a number of dealings with these people. I, I was hoping that, you know, he would be able to get in touch with them and get us a corrected application. Um, but, um, obviously that didn't happen, but, um, and this was only a couple of days ago. Cause that's the first time I looked at it, but, um, the, um. No, um, I, I don't, I just don't see any choice other than tabling it until we get a correct application. I mean, we can't change it ourselves. If we had a, you know, in-person meeting and the applicant was here or at the town office. Then it could be easily corrected, but we don't have that option tonight, sadly.
And what would seem like a small adjustment going from point three four to point three five has large implications.
Well, yeah, if it didn't mean anything, it would be a, you know, so what? But it doesn't, in terms of the standards of the ordinance.
Right, right. Yeah, I can certainly live with tabling it myself based on, on that. And that was very insightful to have done the math. Quite frankly, I hadn't redone the math for them. Um, I was trusting what they put down.
Well, the only reason I caught it was because it was such a small lot. And because I was concerned how close, uh, they might be already to the twenty percent rule in terms of coverage of. That, you know, with non-vegetated area. And, um, and, and at first was heading down the path that. You know, they already have twenty point two-six percent coverage. And then I started looking at the site drawing, realized that the number of square feet that they were providing. And point three four acres were two different numbers.
Yeah. And the other thing that, as we look at the application in turn, when it gets down to the pickiness or the technicality of. Lot coverage is, when you look at the picture, some of that existing deck is going to be going over. The landing, I think, and the gravel stone walkway going into that lower door. So some of that is already gonna be cover, gonna be under lot coverage. So if you put something over top of something that's lot coverage, that part can be deducted from.
Right.
Additional, we, we really don't know what that is or whatever.
Yep, it would be good to have that discussion with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we could get this corrected, the point, you know, to, um, the accurate. Which I believe be fifteen thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet. All those issues go away.
Oh, according to the drawing, though, that pretty much that whole deck's gonna go over top of gravel. According to the picture, I'm alone.
So that means that, that Craig, that there's other stu- that other stuff can get subtracted, right?
Yeah, if it's over the top of the other, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it looks like most of it. It's looks like it's gonna go almost right up to, I guess, to the front of the house. And the first, I don't know, eight feet or so, uh, looks like it's gravel. I see stone walkway. I assume that's not grass area adjacent to it. It's probably stone. Uh, walkway or whatever. Uh, but yeah, a lot of that's gonna be covered by the, uh, already covered area, if you will.
I, I'm now just scrolling down to the, the end of the application. There's a picture of profile of, of the house, and I can see what they're talking about. I don't know, Rich, if you can see that or not.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I, I would be willing to vote in favor of tabling this to, to, um, to then communicate back to the LaRue family, who I'm sure they want to do the right thing. Reexamine their, um, their numbers a little bit with the information that we can provide about this. And, uh, we need, we need better information.
I'll make a motion, retable the application pending, uh, additional information from the applicant.
Does anybody, I, I have a question. Uh, I'm just curious what, how people are interpreting the photo with the, um, I don't know if it's an outdoor shower or what it is, uh, off to the right. It looks like it's got a base to it. Can't be certain, but that's not shown on the, uh, site drawing.
Kind of looks like an outdoor shower.
So that would add to the structure, um, as would, um, it looks like there's, uh, a walkway, the start of a gravel walkway that goes from the edge of the stone wall, probably to the parking area, I would guess. That's not shown on the site drawing either, so it's hard to know whether the, um, the, um, three thousand square feet um, unvegetated surface area, you know, how accurate that is.
Yep. Yep. Well, I think it's fair to say that due to the tight, um, limitations that we have on this particular lot, it's important, details are really important. Um, I guess I would ask, Nick, if you could, uh, please communicate either to Gary, um, who would be in communication with the LaRue family, to let them know about these things. That would be very helpful for the next meeting if, if they could address those issues.
So just to recap, I, I think for, um, for Nick's benefit, uh, one would be to correct the, uh, total lot area. Uh, we, on, you know, is it point three, four acres or is it fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet?
Did, um?
I think it's the latter, but, uh, I'm not positive.
Do you also want more information on the unvegetated, unvegetated area?
Yeah, that was the second thing I was gonna say. Is there a walkway? An, an unvegetated walkway that go, connects the camp to the parking area that should be taken into account?
And then whatever that thing is, that's, uh, or what, other thing, right?
Oh, yeah. And, and what is, what's the attachment at the right back of the, uh, camp? Appears to be, you know, something that could be a structure.
You can have your computer back.
The, um, and then, you know, just recalculating the square footage of unvegetated surface.
Yep.
So should we, um, find out how much of that deck's over over the gravel? So we're not counting that twice.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Craig. Um, it almost
Looks like the whole thing.
Yeah, it, it does look like it's probably the whole thing.
It does.
So, you know, um, hopefully that would be taken care of in the calculation of unvegetated square footage.
Yep.
I mean, it's kind of hard to know where this is all gonna fall out, but
And, and this would be one of the things that, uh, to me, you know, if they could, maybe applicants could run some things initially by Nick, or if it's beyond Nick, then to consult with Gary. Have that worked out before coming to us? That would be very helpful.
Yeah, they spoke to Gary, but it was last summer.
Yeah.
A year ago.
Yeah. Well, all right. So we have a motion on the, on the floor from Rich Baker to table the application until we get more information from the applicant. Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Second it. And we have had some good discussion. Any more discussion on this? No? Okay, hearing none, I will, uh, do a roll call vote. Uh, all those in favor, uh, George?
Yes.
In favor, Craig Alexander?
Yes.
Favor, Rich Baker?
Yes.
In favor, and Peter Rushton's in favor of tabling the application. None, all in favor and none opposed. It is tabled. Excellent. Uh, gentlemen, uh, I want to thank you so much for your time this evening in particular. It was a longish, another long meeting, so thank you very much for
Except for all the ones we missed, I guess.
Yeah, so almost double duty.
I hope that ends the trend.
I know. Um, Gary's not here to give us any updates. Um, let's see, I heard one update today, but I don't want to steal the thunder. Uh, Nick Poole, can you come online?
Yes.
Uh, is, is it okay to talk about transitions?
I, I don't think so, not yet, because I don't think the person who's taking over knows yet.
Okay, so we will table that until another time.
Yes, absolutely. I'm sure you guys will find out soon.
Yeah. None of it's bad.
I'll have to hang out at the transfer station.
Yeah, right.
I, I can say that none of it's bad, right? It's all good.
Yes, yes. I think, yes, it was good.
I think.
No one's gonna be left in the
We'll be the judge of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Um, uh, all right, thanks, Nick. I appreciate that. Um, next was, we don't have Gary tonight. He had some other thing. I'm, I'm hoping we can catch up with him. Um, Anthony did write to me and said, hey, should we bring, uh, Nick in from KV cog, you know, at some point? And I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, let's see if he's amenable to doing a Zoom meeting at some point, right? So I did put that on there.
Um, before you came on, uh, line, Peter, um, Anthony told me that, um, uh, that he wa- uh, that Nick was, uh, amenable and An- Anthony was talking about doing it at the next meeting. Um, I didn't say anything because I didn't know what was on our agenda, but, but, you know, we got solar fields and it sounds like, I don't know.
The Jones.
Said we got some, a bunch of other backlog.
Yeah. So
Yeah, you have the Jones, solar fields, the one you guys tabled today. I think there's one other one.
That's an evening right there.
Yep.
Yeah.
It is. All right. Um, well, having, having said that, I don't, I don't know what else we can do tonight. Um, is there anything else you want to talk about?
No, but I want to eat supper.
Yeah, I made sure to wolf down something beforehand, so we'll, we'll get out of here so you can go eat supper. It's getting late. Getting late.
American chop suey at the field house.
Chris, Christie's, uh, ham and cheese sandwich.
All right. If nothing else, we'll call it an evening. Thank you, everybody. Really
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. See you, Nick.